I'm going to call this meeting the school committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful engaged lifelong learners and I'm going to ask you to join me. Plaid leaders, sit in fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. Moving on to recognitions. I want you to be quiet. Recognitions. Okay, then we're going to go straight to our senior advisory council.
Yeah, so it's just me tonight, I'm the secretary. So, one thing we wanted to talk about first was that we have our senior semi-formal on October 5th and we are selling tickets for that right now. It's very exciting for us seniors, it's our first big dance, so we're very excited.
Where is it going to be?
Hmm?
Where is it going to be?
It's at the Manchester Essex Country Club. Yeah, and then our prom, which is in like, May, is at the Danvers...
Danversport.
Yeah, Danversport, thank you. The football team has the first playoff game this Friday at home, so we have one more home game at least, which is very exciting. And we have the Bleachers too, so that's exciting. Field hockey has their last game tonight of the NEC conference and if they win, they're NEC champions, so that's exciting too. The girls soccer has their senior night tomorrow, which is their last home game, and then boys soccer has theirs tonight, or it already happened. What else? Oh, DHS Theaters doing a show, and that's this weekend. It's one show on Thursday, one show on Friday, and two on Saturday. It's Macbeth and Hamlet, it's kind of like a parody, it's, yeah. Last thing, the Think Pink shirts that Ms. Vennecy sells every year, those just came in and we're going to take the school picture soon with the shirts on, so it's very exciting.
Any questions?
I have a question, I heard rumor about lobster rolls.
Yeah, the Interact Club, we just finished selling those. The Interact Club sells lobster rolls and raises money for, I think, the American Cancer Society, I'm not 100% sure, but we are delivering those on Friday, so... And we're making them, and like, making the rolls, and like, we made the cookies yesterday that go in the lunches, and we're making them tomorrow, so, very fun, yeah.
I can't wait to get mine.
Yeah.
We got like 20 over my office.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, as a board member, I've been a part of Interact since my freshman year and it's always one of the most like, fun fundraisers in my opinion, one of the most like, exciting ones.
They taste good, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, I understand if you have homework.
I'll probably, yes. Thank you, I appreciate it.
The consent agenda, are there any items on this consent agenda that anybody would like to remove?
I want that we approve the consent agenda second.
Okay, all of them say hi.
Hi.
And I oppose, unanimous. And we'll move on to deliberations on education initiatives. And we have Assistant Superintendent Black doing a presentation on our professional development plan.
Thank you. Wait for this from us? I think it is, yeah.
Apple TV.
Oh, Apple TV. Still not powered on? So, while the equipment is powering up, I did put a paper copy on your table so we can, we can start there. The mayor has asked that I speak really quickly tonight.
He always listens to my comments.
With your permission, I'll reply. What I did was, I, we don't have to go through these line by line, but I wanted you to take a look at everything that's happened since August. It is pretty impressive. We have, I'll just highlight a little bit, first slide that is, actually, I think I can get this on for thousands of people that are watching at home. Not connected. Alright. So, we have, in August, one of the big ones that started off the month was at Essex County Learning Collaborative, Somerville Institute, two full days with seven, in our seven district collaborative, I think I've shared with you that we, we started working with Danvers, Beverly, Rockport, Habrel, and Swambsk in the seven district collaborative to explore professional development opportunities for all seven of us to stretch our dollars and share our expertise. So, we, members from every district, 17, seven members from each team attended in August. It was fantastic, high-end presenters from around the country came in and worked with each of our teams. We had science training, pilot training, we had worked on social studies, we had our retreat, which I shared with you, we had some evaluation PD. We had co-teaching training, which as you know will begin at the middle, at the veteran school, and has spread to other parts of the district, there's training for middle school as well. I also shared a thing that we have new teacher math and EOL academies, which from our new teachers who were called afterward, were fantastic, they were able to start the year with a full day of training in each subject area and dive again, also the related technology as well. September was a good month, we had the implementation of the new science program at the middle school, associated training, we had full day evaluation training for new teachers, 19 EOL training, five-year training, and then we started our med, civics and social studies rewrite in middle school with consultant Kevin O'Reilly, who's been working to do actually model lessons and work with the teachers. We got an early jump on that, we have two years to complete that work and they're already probably halfway through, so, great start with that. That brings us to our October 2nd, and I had to include it here because Charlie Appelstein, Appelstein who was at the middle school, we were at, located the middle school to use the auditorium, but it was for K through 5, I received, I rarely get any outpouring like this, but I got no less than 20 emails and texts, including one that said, "Facebook is buzzing with how good today was," and the person who sent it said, "Don't see that very often." So, I sent Charlie a collection of feedback, and he was grateful for the reception he got in Gloucester, but our teachers and paraprofessionals were absolutely stunned, a lot of people said it was the best they'd seen in 19 years, so, we'll have them back to do targeted professional development. Coaching skills, key literacy, SCL work at the high school, and then high school was also working on the M.A.S., so, October was a great beginning of the month, we're working with MIT Edgerton Center for work on the makerspace training, we've got a 15-hour course for ELL training that has started at the high school in the afternoons to into the evening, growth mindset, safe and supportive schoolwork at O'Malley, and then coming up at the end of the month, more MIT Edgerton Center training for our science teachers. November's, so this is what's coming ahead, this is the big one, I wanted to bring this to your attention, we have seven, 70 staff members going out to regional M Penn training, which is art, music, PE, guidance counselors, lots of groups, small groups that typically don't get good training, so they'll be going as far away as low away, I think, but we've got regional training sites where, I believe it's 30 districts are all together on that. One of the big things I shared to do, included in your packet on the last page, a colored sheet or third to last page, is what's happening at K-5, I encourage you to stop by O'Malley School where the principal has been kind enough to once again allow us the use of the space at the elementary school, to hold a lot of training centrally there, it's a great place for us to set up shop. We have 40, four sessions through the day, 40 courses and 47 instructors, just for elementary school, 40 of those instructors are Gloucester teachers, so, we responded to a request to share more expertise within, from within, so we're trying to balance outside professionals with inside expertise and best practice here, so, this is a big undertaking that hopefully you'll stop by and see things in action. And the other, there's a lot of work at the middle school, the new principal is keeping the entire staff together on that day, and they have three particular things, they're working on core values, teacher-led workshops, and then trauma-sensitive practices, a really big, another huge undertaking that I have to shout out to Amy Camp, who has been working so hard on this, I should, I should update that to 130 participants, it'll be held at Cruzport, 7:30 to 2:30, it's the, sorry, it's the Sandy Hook Promise Group is coming to work with, with the high school, and three additional towns are joining in, they have a few seats for each of the separate towns, and we have representatives, representatives from each building, I put a description of what, what will be taking place and why, and they're close in your packet, but that, either one of these would be a really great one to see, and so if you're in the neighborhood, I encourage you to stop in. That's just, that's all on election day, and then November 27th, we'll be going to share more expertise across districts, and Melrose to do an internal review of their science program to help them, actually, a lot of districts are joining to do a self-study, and it's a great opportunity to see what another district is doing, but also to connect with other colleagues. Upcoming, yes, sorry, questions?
I just have a quick question for the high school safety assessment intervention.
Yeah.
Is, are all the teachers able to participate in that at the high school?
At the high school, yes.
Or is, so they'll all be going over?
It's 130 Gloucester High staff and district staff, that's everybody from the high school.
Teachers and paras are, or just mostly teachers?
Paraprofessionals have a...
They have their own thing, okay.
Another piece going on, but it's essentially on the rest of the building. So, upcoming things to look for, we have, oh, I'm sorry, we also have going on on a regular basis, we have work with the May Institute at West Parish, these are embedded during the day, Paula Bransfield is doing embedded coaching and modeling at the elementary level, Kevin O'Reilly mentioned civics, we have co-teaching, coaching at the high school, math coaching consultant at O'Malley, and we're going to be working with Melissa Workin with our literacy coaches, she's been working with Tuck in literacy, and so we just, we have a lot of things that aren't one-timers, these are going throughout the year, which we're trying to do for continuity, so that we have key moments and then with support of I have embedded professional development and coaching. Upcoming, in December, Common Writing Scoring and Professional Development, Science Practices, we'll probably be working with Dr. David Brooks in January, if that gets confirmed, more teacher-led workshops, we have high school piece literacy, lesson design for engagement and access, more MIT work, and then an extension of the Essex County Learning Collaborative work that I mentioned earlier, which is out of that work with the seven districts, we'll be identifying a three-to-five-year focus, leveraging district collaboratives, these are the seven involved with us on ECLC, and I was at a meeting today, Essex County Reading, we're also trying to work with these six districts, Gloucester, Manchester, and Penn Tuck, and other leads, and we will be planning very, very high-level reading instruction around the science of reading for each of these, to share among the six schools, so we may host something in the spring or next year, we may, we're working toward a five-day graduate credit course to be offered probably in the summer, that will be designed by the three lead districts and provide graduate grad credit right here locally. So, we're just, we're starting to do a lot of stuff we haven't done a lot of in the past, which is to connect with neighbors and stretch our expertise and talent and dollars. Some of the core themes, we're really looking closely at instructional practice in every class, what are the research-based strategies that are most likely to have the best results? That's what we'll be looking at here in Gloucester and regionally. We'll be looking at tier-one social-emotional learning strategies that have the best results in the classroom, and you'll notice that I've included access engagement, that's just a theme that's running through all of us. Are we reaching all students and are we engaging all students? And we'll be looking at cultural competence, that's going to be shared among the seven districts we're working on, and then there are a few other ones that are, you know, safe and supportive schools, ongoing, will be redesigned shop study process, our five, fifth, the sixth grade transition, there's a lot going on, it's great at both places, but we don't do a lot of good work, studying work around making sure that there's a seamless transition five to six, that's improved over the years in other, in other ways, we get kids involved in the school, but at that curricular level, we need to do more work there. RTI work at the middle school, and as you know, the high school has engaged, entered the M.A.S., so...
I have a question.
Yeah.
How do you develop things and initiatives, what kind of input, if any, do you get from different levels of staff from the district?
So, we've had a group that is comprised of special educators, administrators, and teachers K through A, and this is a K through A focus, so we have elementary teachers and administrators, middle school teachers and administrators, and we have all been part of that team, and then we have three sub-teams that are made up of teachers representing each of those areas from all of the schools in question, and all of those schools have gotten together in the seven districts, so we had four different teams all meeting together to find common problems, issues of each district, and those were the common areas where every district, regardless of their achievement level or economic level, all are struggling with the same kinds of things, so, I think we got a pretty good representation and also we had to repeat that.
Thank you.
I'm trying to keep it as quick as I can, it was a lot to cover, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Much to my surprise, I was reviewing our policies today, and I learned that personal subcommittee is supposed to review professional development programs, so I was interested in what you had to say about the feedback that you're getting, so I'm wondering if later in the early spring or something, if you could bring a report forward with a lot of the data and the feedback that you got from these teams and initiatives to...
We'll be surveying every teacher after each of these events, so I'm happy to share that.
Yeah, in late spring, so you can have conversations, how it worked out, best practices and things like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Then we'll move on to what promises to be the most important moment of the superintendent report.
Plus ultra, Mr. Chair, always seeking more beyond, thank you. Item number one, there are training sessions for grade 10 next-generation MCAS exams, you see a listing in the report of the various locations and times and dates, this is just my way of letting you know that the MCAS has caught the high school's attention, and there will be a number of ELLA and math department staff members who will be signing, who have already signed up for this particular session. As an aside, it was last week I had an opportunity to visit the high school, and I sat in on some of their professional learning community time, in math in particular, very active reviewing curriculum in relation to the standards themselves, and also based upon what their knowledge of the types of questions that they have been being asked and will be asked on the MCAS as well. So, they're looking at aligning, further aligning their curriculum units with the standards and with the MCAS, and they're also looking at pacing, which obviously means that if there's an area where students are struggling, you need to spend a little bit more time on it, if there's an area where students are pretty much get it fairly quickly, you can move more quickly as well, so there's a lot of active dialogue and engagement going on there. A follow-up to what we reported at the last program's subcommittee meeting regarding our bi-weekly meetings with the Department of Public Works, who've been working on the vocational safety checklist report for quite some time, things are coalescing, and you have a bulleted list of a number of the items which we had discussed at the last meeting, replacement of the floors for both the electrical and carpentry shops are being assessed by the Department of Public Works, who did I speak with today who said that it might be as much as $80,000 built, what was that?
That was me.
Was it you? I don't know if that 360 degree...
That was the, that was the machine shop floor.
Machine shop, that? Machine shop, not the carpentry?
No, they're actually working on it today.
Alright, good. Safe electrical cords and cabinet making, so the power can be disconnected in the advent of an emergency, acquisition of building permits for the new CVTE classroom at the high school, which is going to be habitated by the craftsmen, local 22, as part of the pilot program, review of storage in alternate locations, weight-bearing issues, lofts, shelving, all sorts of work is undergoing review at this time, and a decommissioning of a crane system in the machine tool technology shop, which I believe was used for making fishnets way back in the day, and we don't make too many fishnets anymore. The painting of no parking signs on the driveway in front of vocational classrooms is a chronic issue as recently as today, I was going to say yesterday, but as recently as today, so we really need to get on that as well. And room 3404, the physics room where the robotics takes place, has been closed down due to code compliance issues, and the word I received is that it will be open for business beginning tomorrow.
Hopefully?
Hopefully by tomorrow, moving along. Item number three, in, over the summer, the legislature on Beacon Hill passed a law which in effect has put greater emphasis on contracts over Chapter 71, Section 59B, which is the law which governs the principal's responsibilities over hiring and maintenance and discipline and everything else. The new law retains the principal's hiring authority for not teaching school employees, but requires that promotions and disciplinary decisions be made in accordance with collective bargaining agreements. I was speaking with the chair of the personal subcommittee, and we'd like to reach out to Naomi to find out very specifically what this means in terms of what the rights are for principals and the responsibilities and what the restrictions are, but the legislation clearly places a stronger emphasis on the contract itself in relation to that particular law. More on that later, I presume. Last, last Friday, we were at the Gloucester Education Foundation donor event at the North Shore Arts Association, it was very well-intended and very, very interesting in that there were three groups of students, elementary, middle, and high school, some students from the STEAM camp at Beeman answered some interview questions as delightfully as they, you know, always do, and we had three Mary Poppins from the O'Malley Theater, I thought I was seeing tripled, but it wasn't, what it does say is that there's so much enthusiasm that they have multiple casts, which means that there are different children from different casts and three different Mary Poppins, so, I won't say that it's popping, I'll leave it at that, but it's doing very well. And a high school student who merely demonstrated a drone at the North Shore Arts Association, he had it flying around just a little bit, and caught it, and it was only extraordinary, as I like to say, it was just a really remarkable testament to this particular child and to the education it is getting as well. Some of the things, the GEF has been an ardent supporter over the last 10 years, the physics department, in fact, for new robotics equipment, received recently a $38,000 donation, there's the, the ongoing project, the annual project on climate change and seeking relief from sea level rise, biomechanics, we've incorporated some physiology, practical physiology into our anatomy and physiology courses, so that students have a better understanding of the nature of injuries and how to prevent them, computer-assisted designs, some printers for CAD, high school chemistry partnership with Maritime Gloucester, the sound system at the high school, of course, the big sound system at the middle school as well, the O'Malley's environmental partnership program with the Mass Audubon Society, aquaponics has required a shifting and a renovation from one area of the building to another, due to which grade is going to incorporate into its curriculum and the like, need a little bit of help on that, the O'Malley Performing Arts, some literacy and touchscreen Chromebooks for our earliest students, some of our students tend to learn literacy better if they have the tactile quality where they can use the hands and the iPad, and we've experimented with that at East Gloucester. Then, of course, there's the after-school music instruction, and I would say they pay about two-fifths of the overall cost for both the elementary and the middle school. After-school instrumental music, there's ballroom dance, Dance Through the Decades, the Citywide Arts Festival, which is scheduled for around May the 12th, as per usual, the countdown to kindergarten over the summer, a, just a recent renewal, which I think you'll be voting on this evening, on music therapy for some of our life skills children, and we've heard about Amy Camp's fine work in terms of professional development, and another area that she reached out last year and hopes to incorporate again this year is the youth mental health first aid for professional development for teachers. Last, on the calendar, the Open Door Autumn Breakfast is tomorrow morning at Cruzport at 7:30. On Friday is the Fall Cape Ann Caucus, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, it's taking place in the Manchester American Legion, so usually Representative Veronica Lee from Santa Tare, Representative Brad Hill, and a few others come, and we have an opportunity to talk a little bit about things such as the legislation involving Chapter 7159B, that'll be my question, and there's a genomics institute, the Gloucester Marine Genomics Institute ribbon cutting ceremony over on Rogers Street on October the 30th at 11 o'clock.
Any questions to the superintendent?
That we approve this superintendent for second?
On, they must say hi.
Hi.
Vote, unanimous. We'll move on to committee reports, and we're a little in on committee members here. Joel, would you like to just report out on the program subcommittee?
Yes.
The minutes are there.
So, I believe we met on October 11th, we received a report from Dr. Sapphire.
Where are the minutes?
The minutes are in here.
Oh, no, okay.
Dr. Sapphire accompanied by Principal Cook gave an update on the improvements to the checklist for the CVTE program for the various issues that were flagged during the last analysis. We also went through the substitute teacher policy, and Dr. Sapphire gave another report on how the schools compared to one another do as far as, you know, substitute teachers being used, frequency, amount per year, that sort of thing. teachers being used, frequency amount per year, that sort of thing. And then the only thing to come out of the committee was related to file ECAF, security cameras in schools, which you should have in front of you. This is Dr. Sapphire, I kept it wrong. Is this a new file entirely under ECA?
It is. The, it really should read ECAF. File ECA talks in general terms, and you do have it in your packet, it does talk in general terms about security in the schools. But it does not really touch upon transportation, which has been the main issue with the advent of both video and audio recording due to come online for our transportation, for our school buses, beginning January the 2nd. So the focus, by and large, is on file ECAF, which is a new file. However, it is also one that has been provided to us by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and it's up for review later this evening.
You see the markers that were made on the committee. Whether it's going to be for, do we vote to refer it back out to the other subcommittee yet?
We're going, we voted to recommend the first reading, and we'll talk about that when we take it up, whether that's what we're gonna do or not.
Okay. That's it?
And being that, I can be the last man standing on that, can we? Here we are. We reviewed, as always, the district expenditures, and at this moment in time, there is no red flags coming up of us overspending in any particular line items. There are some unexpected, unanticipated expenses, but they're not major, and they are going to be, there's plans for handling them, such as the additional class at the preschool and such. We looked at the DPW open tickets and the closed tickets, and we had another discussion about the same items that are in the, at the high school, and the progress deal, which the superintendent reported out, and were also reported out at program. Food services is doing better, as far as they're doing well. We had some of the things that they have implemented to try to make the more, closer to self-sustaining, are showing some, some progress. There were very few budget transfers, and they were in your, the consent agenda, the revolving funds all seemed to be in good shape. We did look at the new analysis of how we deal with cash, and in the packet, there were a number of forms that are used in the process of accounting for cash, particularly gate receipts is the major cash in. But there's, there's a system where two people, everything has to be counted by two people. There's, there's forms that have to be filled out. There's deposits have to be made that day, that night, whenever that it is. The contingency balance, we had a discussion about projections of where we might end up should everything hold as far as unanticipated expenses go, where we might end up at the end of the year. So that seems to be where we're still in the positive batches. Did I get most of that?
You did very, very well.
Okay. So we'll move on to action items, and I'd like to take the, because we have an assistant principal of the middle school here. I'd like to take item B for approval of the outer state field trip request. This, the O'Malley Innovation Middle School want to go to Washington, DC. This is an annual trip that happens every year, but it's good to hear about, an update on what's planned and what, how it's gonna be managed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is really my pleasure to coordinate the eighth grade class trip to Washington, DC. It becomes a lifelong memory for our students. You know, kids who are seniors now have been on this trip. Every time I see them wherever, they have some fond memories of it. We go at the end of March. Last year's trip, we were dead on with the cherry blossoms in Fulbloom. It was just amazing. So we leave very early on a Wednesday morning. It's a four-day venture. The 9/11 bus ride, it becomes part of the experience. And we watch a few movies, and we tell a few jokes, and that's all good. There in DC, we hit all of the high points. And now the curriculum for social studies has shifted toward civics. We're dead on with all of these things, so it's a really wonderful aspect. We'll go to the Capitol Building. Our kids get to lay a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknown in the Arlington National Cemetery. Something those four kids will never, ever forget. We'll go to the Holocaust Museum. It's a place that everybody should visit once in their life, very important, very solemn. We'll go up to Mount Vernon and visit George Washington's mansion right on the shores of the Potomac River. It's a beautiful spot. I will hit the Smithsonian Institute. We will hopefully go to the 9/11 Memorial of the Pentagon, where we always applied for admission to the White House. Kids have a great time. We do some fundraising to help defray the costs, and we appreciate the committee's ongoing support. Have a answer on any questions you may have?
Any?
Can you skip the White House?
Last year, we did. It conflicted with our replaying ceremony, and I felt, we had to make a decision, and I felt that was more important. We did go to the front of the White House and did a follow-up.
I just wanna comment, lifelong memories, definitely. I hear older students still talking about that trip to this day. It's a great place to visit, and you're absolutely right about the Holocaust Museum. I would focus a lot on that because there is concerns that it's, that old period of time is not really discussed enough in school, and we don't want people to forget. So I hope that there's a good focus on that museum. It's a lot.
Absolutely. We tangle a lot into that four days. We see our kids moving. Great security at the hotel, everything is very well organized, and everyone's resupplied.
Good. Thank you for doing that.
Any other questions?
Will you be doing your annual Twitter updates throughout the?
Absolutely.
I recommend to NFL members, you find him on Twitter and follow him. He keeps a really good log of your trip.
Yeah. At MyStrongMoose though.
I move that we approve the O'Malley School annual trip to Washington, DC from March 27th through March 30th. Second, 2019.
Any discussion?
I sound sure the congressman will come find them. They'll know ahead of time, absolutely. They love that. Set out the senators, so we'll make sure we get that all set up.
Absolutely. That would be great. You know, a few years back, Representative Cheney met us on the steps. He was like a rock star that day. So that's, that's always a neat thing, too.
So you have March when?
March 27th. So we'll be at the Capitol Building on Thursday.
We'll hook up and give me a cell, and I'll give them all the information. So yeah, he'll be more than happy to.
Perfect.
Especially if they're there, they'll be more than happy to. Or either that, they'll have their, we went also, we borrowed some groups, and sometimes if they can't come, they'll bring their aides to take you around. It's really fun.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Fifty minutes.
I can send some tweets about the Red Sox game when I get home.
[laughter]
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We're still on schedule here. Okay. Coming out of the program subcommittee, we had the recommendation of, to a first reading of the security cameras in school policy, file ECAF, which is included. Is everybody? Okay. It's a fairly long, a fairly long thing. This is, this is a brand-new policy, so there will be a first reading and a second reading. And there's some concern that this is, there's impact bargaining going to be required because of this new policy. But I would suggest that we move forward with the first reading and then refer it to the program subcommittee, the personnel subcommittee, excuse me. And so that when it comes back, it would be for the second reading.
I would suggest that we table this tonight and refer it to personnel. I had a chance to review it and went through a lot of things and have a lot of questions and would not necessarily agree with a lot of the language that's in there now. So I would like to see another view of this policy in personnel and then come forward and have the first reading. We can always waive the second in Dart if we have time to the issue, but I just think this is part of a bigger conversation. I don't want to approve any reading of this tonight without knowing the procedures and the safeguards that are gonna come in place because of this policy. I know Dr. Sapphire has done a ton of work on this. I absolutely love your documents where you took our, the policy you created and then put the other policy language underneath. I think that's great. But from my perspective, I see the big picture in this, and I don't wanna piecemeal it. I don't wanna put out a policy and then figure it out. I wanna hear a lot more from the administration on what, how this is gonna happen, how the language in the policy is gonna be implemented.
What we, if I may interrupt, what we've also handed out tonight, not to suggest a different course of action, but just FYI, that we did hand out a first draft of procedures.
Yep. No, I saw that too. Yep. So I have a couple problems with that. First of all, you gave it out tonight, not a couple days ago, so I haven't had a chance to go through it. So I feel like this is being rushed. Second, there's no minutes to this meeting before us, and I would have liked to have seen some conversation that led to how you got to this policy. And I thought we had an internal understanding that we didn't approve things without seeing minutes of a meeting first. So I'm a little wary that there's no conversation captured by anyone on how this policy came forward tonight. And because it does have a direct impact on the contracts that we have, I think a little bit more time needs to go into this and to the committee and have more information come out before we even do the first reading.
The, the procedures were just a way of trying to etch out some of the more specifics, which the policy itself, regarding guidelines, the intent handing it out today was not to suggest that there would be any action taken on it. That's what it took to get it, but at least now it's in your hands.
And I would say, I read the, I read your draft, because normally you hand it out tonight, but you had emailed it to us earlier. So I read a little bit of it, and I see things in those procedures that I would wanna see in the policy. So those are the kind of conversations I think personnel can have before we get into this and then get confused about what we approved and what didn't. Give personnel an opportunity to review it and then bring out a document that is either similar to what we have, that incorporates a little bit more to it, or I don't know what's gonna come out of it. So I just think that tabling it tonight, giving us a chance to have personnel subcommittee, I would suggest November 13th, it's a Tuesday, give us time to have a really good discussion on this with some other school committee members, too, and talk about the concerns. Because, I mean, this, this does have an impact on privacy. While I understand completely that there's not necessarily a right to privacy so much in this situation, I think a conversation needs to be had about that, and how this one apply to this policy, and how parents' concerns can be brought into this, too. Because a quick look at this, what you put before us tonight, doesn't even give parents a right to request a copy of a video. So there's a lot of things in here, I think, still need to be discussed before we put this out for the public and start dissecting it. So I would just request that we put a little bit more time on it and have a conversation at either our next meeting or the meeting after, that incorporates a lot more conversation from the school committee and a lot more information regarding how this policy's gonna be implemented and how it affects not only students, but the students in the district.
There is a section, review of video, audio recordings, where all live viewing and listening requests must be submitted and written to the superintendent within five days, and a number of other bullets.
Yeah, that's in your procedures, though, not in your policy. The policy just says access will be by the superintendent of the school committee.
So if you wanna make a motion to table this?
So I moved it to table this tonight for those reasons and maybe more, just to have a better conversation. That's all. But I thoroughly appreciate all the work that's gone into this. It's a lot.
And refer it to?
Well, it's already been referred to personnel. We just haven't had a chance to review it yet. I, I thought it was gonna come to personnel after program looked at it, but I saw it here on the agenda, and I was surprised.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Joel?
I mean, frankly, surprised that Ms. Texero suddenly wants to hear from parents and have further discussion on this policy. That wasn't the case two minutes ago when she rushed the initial vote through. Nevertheless, excuse me for speaking.
Oh, my God.
Nevertheless, nevertheless, I agree that if she feels there's more work to be done on this, then we should provide her and her subcommittee more time to do more work on this. And so I'll support a motion to table it tonight.
Second the motion.
It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor to table the, the first reading of the file ACF?
ECA.
ECA. I don't have it right in front of me. I have no memory. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Voted. Action items. And we will move on to our, we have here tonight Council Gilman, who is been appointed by the administration to be
I was against you.
Our representative to the North Shore Agricultural and Technical School Committee. And this is effective January 1st, I believe. And she will be replacing our longstanding representative, Melissa Texera, who, coming here soon?
Almost nine.
Almost nine. Okay. So well, thank you for that service also. We have sent out Council Gilman's resume, and we'd like to hear from you about what you look forward to doing in this appointment.
Thank you, Chairperson Pope and the school committee and Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. This is exciting for me. I was part of the group nine years ago that supported the move to the new tech. I followed it closely. I listened, had many talks with Melissa Texera about what was happening. And, you know, I love to see our students in Gloucester thrive in, I think it's 24 areas that we don't have here in Gloucester, where they can get technical skills that will help them post-high school. So it's exciting to me. I think my background is solid. I've got six years in the school committee, three years on the city council. I understand ed reform. I understand the areas that you, that school committees need to focus on, goal setting, budget policies. So I think it will be easy for me to sit in. I understand from Melissa that there's one meeting a month, and one opportunity to be on a subcommittee as well. So I think I can handle it with my current role on the city council. I, I think that there's a lot of collaboration that can, can happen, and I'll look forward to reporting back to the mayor when we learn of any budget issues or financial matters that are coming down the pipeline, so we have a knowledge about what's going on in the community. I will look forward to attending Mass meetings of MASSS and Hyannis again. I don't know if I could room with you two again. Jam, am I? But it's just, it's, it's, I love our schools, and I've always enjoyed working with all of you, and I'm grateful that the mayor has given me her trust to represent the city of Gloucester. And if any of you have any questions for me, please, please ask through the chair. But I'm grateful, and I will represent Gloucester well. Melissa's a heart I have to follow, and she's promised me that she'll take me up and introduce me to everyone before January 1st. We have lots of things to look forward to. And I'm excited. So thank you.
Any, any questions?
I'm just gonna make a motion that we approve City Council of Valerie Gilman as Representative Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School, effective January 2019 for a three-year term, as recommended by Mayor Ramona Taken.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this-
Belle, I think this is a really good move for the city. I think you will be a great fit for Gloucester. I think after Melissa, she's been wonderful on the, on the tech and she comes to our meetings and explains to us a lot of things that are going on up there. So, and I know that she has to report to the mayor and as to you, but it would be great if you could come to one of our meetings here and there and just give us a little bit of an update on what's going on up there, because we seem to get it from Melissa a lot, so it would be kind of interesting if you could still maybe do that every now and then. I've worked with you for many years on the school committee and I just, I think this is a great fit and I'm very happy that you're going to be taking us on.
Thank you.
So Belle called me a while back about this and told me of her interest and I was very, very pleasantly surprised. And I took a little bit of time to think about it because it just surprised me, because I never thought of you coming forward. And the more I thought about it, I loved the idea. I think you are going to be a perfect fit up there. I think your background, who you are, you're an advocate for students, you're a cheerleader for our students, you, you listen, you get involved. Your knowledge and experience from being a chairperson and being on the Gloucester School Committee is tremendous. Your personality, your history with HR is going to be of great assistance to that committee. So I just, I'm really, really happy that you're the one that's going to take my seat when I leave, because I'm struggling with the fact that I'm leaving. But I just, it's, you're making it so easy for me and Gloucester is only going to benefit in a better way. You're going to be very lucky, lucky to work with the new superintendent who is very open to collaboration with other school districts, where the past superintendents looked at school districts as competition. So there's a lot of energy and momentum going on right now with the new program that just came out, where we're already collaborating with them on the program for them to go during the day. There's so much to build on that and I can see you just taking that role by the hands and expanding it for a lot more students, which is one of the primary goals of that school now, is to get vocational and agricultural education in the hands of more students, knowing that our building is only so big up there. So I just see you as the perfect fit and I'm confident in you, I have no concerns at all and I just, actually I'm looking forward to the next two months, working with you to get you up to speed and get you in that school and just make you the perfect fit that I know you can be. So I already made some plans for us and we can talk about that. So with that being said, I am more than happy, I'm going to support this motion and very happy that it's you that's coming forward to do that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I would just like to say that I think it's very valuable that there, that somebody is going to be appointed that has background on the school committee, because I believe that it's a very large committee. There's twenty members on it and a lot of them have no sort of committee or school committee experience and, and I could be very, you represent us well because, just because I know that your knowledge base is so far ahead of what you're walking into. You're well-prepared, so good luck and we hope to hear great things from you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you Mayor.
Well, thank you.
We have one more, I, action item and it is Gloucester Education Foundation grant and it's for the amount of $675 for music therapy for life skills at the Gloucester High School.
I'm going to be approved or accept good grant, $675 music therapy.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Massachusetts School Building Authority project update. The, I was going to look this up, but the high school roof project was closed out last week and it was, as it, the balance dealt was, it came in just under a million dollars under budget. There's almost a million dollars. And that included a number of additional charges in the, the four new rooftop units and the 11 of 13, I can't remember, ventilating fans that were not part of the original project. So even though with those additional expenses, we still came in 940,000 dollars under budget.
I have a question about the project.
Sure.
So I thought I heard a conversation while the project was going on, we were using some sort of special material on the roof that deters seagulls? And I was wondering if that worked?
It's, it's not a material.
The color, yeah.
It's a color, it's white. It's, what they've discovered is that seagulls will drop stuff on black roofs or, because they think it's rocks. And if they don't drop shells and stuff on white roofs, because they think it's the ocean or something.
So does that work? Do we know? I'm just curious, I always wondered what the outcome was going to be, JD, my know.
We have white on the roof of the wreck and it's only worth because the seagulls go, which makes it very ugly because you do a lot of pecking around the roof. But I don't think I see one or two since the white has gone up there.
I remember wanting to ask this question like a year ago.
Well, the track record is that it does work. It wasn't, we didn't, we're not the experiment here. We are following the, the, the best practice.
You just put like a little drone or a camera with it.
That's a good idea. I have a kid who has one.
As far as the Gloucester Veterans Project goes, John Dunn and Superintendent Sapphire and I attended MSBA last Monday, Tuesday, last week. And it was determined that they are going to proceed to interview the two candidate, the two firms that responded to the RFS. And that will take place on November 6th, election day, right? So we will return, they'll be interviewed and I believe they will make a decision that day.
Hopeful.
Yes, hopeful, so. Anyways, that's what's happening with that. Any questions?
If I just mean to check that the meeting, the mayor to invite you to see the Gloucester School, it's probably a long time since you've been in the building.
I'm going Friday to read.
Okay, good. And maybe you can?
I'd like to show you things and, and keep you in the building.
Right, the point being, as a, as a buildup, if November 6th, there's a designer that is selected and will be wanting to do a press release and just to get you up to speed visually and prepare for that communication. I'd like to invite you to be with Principal Pasquale.
Are you dressing up Friday?
No.
I don't have to dress up.
I'm actually volunteering all day and have a whole bunch of events and so I know it's their little Halloween get-together, but I'll be reading and I can be just as scary with the regular clothes. Right, so there you go. No comment of any of you, right?
The other thing that's, is not on, on the agenda, but I just want to mention in the business is that the city is in the process of doing a comprehensive building study. They've hired Dorian Goodier to do that and they have been, and we have been contacted to have a discussion with them about our needs for a, to have a new school administration. And we're hoping that that will become part of that whole overall, over general view of the needs of the city. So, so you'll be meeting with them, you met with them today?
I met with Brad Lord today. Would like to send a letter either through the school committee or by myself to the mayor indicating that we would like to ask Dorian Goodier, the House Architect, to move forward and review options in and around the school system for the preschool and/or central administration, either together or in separate places, but we'd like to move on that because as we all know, two, three years moves very quickly and work needs to be done.
Okay, any other new business? That we need to? Well, we have to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing.
Does this report about the storm in O'Malley?
Well, that was just put in for information. Everybody got that. We sent that out, but I just wanted it to go in the record opposed and just, I sent it out to all the school committee members.
There was an incident with IT last week and I was just wondering at our next meeting, if you could give us some sort of report on that.
We can give you a report now verbally, we can give you a written report, which you actually also received.
So I saw, yeah, but I didn't, I, we'll talk afterwards. I don't want to get into it now. I don't want to, if I do.
I don't know unless, we're, we're prepared to move forward to adjudicate that particular situation.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm sure, but I just wanted to learn a little bit more.
Please tell them that Senator Mackey just sent a text and Seth Molten, they're looking forward to it. If they're there, you guys are hooking up.
Okay.
Okay, so we are going to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing agreements by the GTA. We will come out of executive session only to adjourn, so I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Roll for a vote.
Yes.
Mr. President? Chairwoman?
Yes.
Belle? Yes, and Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Okay, so we will, um, we'll have five minutes recess. Thank you very much.